Let the record reflect, the meeting is reconvened with all members present. Don Linkz is excused. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As you can see, this is a special occasion. We'll get to that in just a second. Just a little bit of business to get through right now. They have a motion for the executive minutes of September 10th, 2012.
Yes, I move that.
Second.
They have already been discussed in executive. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
A motion for the regular minutes of September 10th, 2012.
I move that.
Second.
Council discussion. Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Welcome, everyone. You got my wireless ready? Is this working? Before I go down below for proclamations and special awards, I want to commend everyone for the fine work on the parade on Friday, Carmen Toto and the whole committee. An incredible parade. It was the biggest crowd I've ever seen, and probably the first time ever in the history of the parade that Santa Claus was not the one that received the biggest cheers, that it was our hurricane heroes that were marching. And I want to thank our borough residents for truly appreciating the hard work, appreciating the hard work that was done by everyone restoring Madison. And also, on another note, this morning, we had the first meeting of the chief executive council for Madison, and this is a group of CEOs who live or work in Madison, and the idea is developing a partnership for community development, corporate development, and education, working with the schools and Drew University. And I want to thank Jim Burnett for all his work in pulling it all together, and the constant emails and the late afternoon meeting yesterday to make sure everything was just right. So it was a great event, and we have another side of the great town we have. At the dinner last week, we presented this, but I wanted to make sure it got presented a second time in front of the camera, and my microphone is not working, so we'll get another one.
Do you want to use this?
I'll use this while we see if we can get a wireless. But our auxiliary police is another fine group of volunteers in the borough of Madison, and it was really reinforced during the hurricane, as I was talking to a wife and mother, wife of one auxiliary policeman and the mother of two, and she was talking about the fact that she was home for most of the storm because her family was out volunteering, making sure Madison was safe. And so I want to recognize the fine effort put by our Madison Auxiliary Police, and it's what's great about these proclamations, we often hear the full history. Whereas these volunteers originally served as air raid wardens in the early 1940s and were formally recognized as a Borough of Madison Civil Defense Unit in 1945, and whereas this group was renamed the Madison Auxiliary Police Civil Defense in 1950, and whereas in November of 1988, the Borough of Madison formally ratified a resolution recognizing this organization as a Borough of Madison Auxiliary Police Unit, and whereas this unit was placed under supervision of the Chief of Police for training and deployment during declared emergency or disaster, and whereas new members are appointed by the Borough Council after completing a course of 50-plus hours at approved police academy, and whereas in order to maintain active status, members are required by the state police to continue their training by riding or patrolling with regular police officers and by attending monthly training meetings, and whereas the auxiliary police members are a source of additional manpower for the borough and assist at special events such as parades, festivals, also with increased traffic and crowd control, not to mention gas lines and other things in times of emergency. And whereas the members of Madison Auxiliary Police are volunteers who have dedicated countless hours to the borough. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, do hereby extend thanks and appreciation to the members of the Madison Auxiliary Police for their efforts, dedication, and commitment to the members of, or to the residents of the Borough of Madison. Thank you so much. How's that one? All right, got a good nod on that. Thank you, Jeannie. Two more proclamations. I'm going to kind of merge these two together. I don't think anyone is here from Dover, Delaware, or Louisiana, but we talked about the parade and recognizing our hurricane heroes, well, we had some that came across state borders to help us out, and that was utility crews from Delaware and Louisiana. Whereas on October 29th, 2012, Superstorm Sandy hit the Northeast slamming New Jersey with up to 80 mile an hour winds, unprecedented 13-foot surge of storm or seawater causing massive destruction and devastating blackouts. Whereas the Borough of Madison sustained major damage caused by multiples, probably this says 30, but I think it was more like 100, utility poles and hundreds of fallen trees, as well as townwide blackout caused by two down JCPN L feeder lines. And whereas after the repair of the JCPN L feeder lines, dedicated members of Madison Utility worked around the clock to restore power, and whereas borough employees were supported in the restoration by a work crew from the Electric Department of the municipality of Dover, Delaware, namely Tim Porter, Dave Morgan, Dennis Weimer, Mark Lloyd, and Eric Long, and whereas this crew, who hails from Delaware's capital city, worked together with members of Madison Electric Utility to restore power to Madison neighborhoods with down utility poles and lines and transformers. And whereas the Dover, Delaware crew, having left their homes and families to assist the borough, did a superb job in making Madison one of the first municipalities to have its power restored, and to recognize the ones from Louisiana. Whereas borough employees were supported in their restoration by a crew from TND Solutions of Louisiana, namely Lenny Williamson, Kevin Sasser, Brady Kelly, Charles Coty, Logan Chaffield, Jamie Challett, Shannon Barrett, Cecil Dazak, Kenneth Strange, and Lawrence Baines. And as I also mentioned in a letter, they knew how to balance work and leisure, as someone on Barnesville asked them, "When are you going to have power restored to our neighborhood?" And the answer was, "Sir, you'll have it up before LSU kicks off tonight." And so this crew worked tirelessly with Madison Electric Utility, and we want to thank the crew from leaving their homes in Louisiana and their families to help us get back together. Now therefore I, Robert H. Conley, the mayor of the Borough of Madison, on behalf of the governing body, hereby extend thanks and appreciation to the employees of TD Solutions and to the Dover, Delaware crew for their work and dedicated efforts in restoring power to the residents of the Borough of Madison. We will be sending these resolutions to the respective employers so they are truly recognized for the effort they have made on our behalf. We also started a new tradition this year with recognizing what we were calling heroic effort on behalf of Madison residents with the Mayor's Award, so we have several to give out tonight, and at this point, I'd like to call up Robert Potter and the Bumgartner So again, this award is heroic effort on behalf of the residents of Madison. The Bumgartner family, standing up here, shortly after the hurricane, had an explosion in their house. To add to their fear, it was almost on the anniversary of an explosion a year prior, and you can imagine what was going through their minds, especially as they were on the second floor and windows were blown out, and the possible panic, "How do we get out? Is it safe to get out of the house? How am I going to get out of the house?" Well, it's people like Robert Potter that make a difference, because what he did was, without thinking, grabbed the ladder, went up the second floor, and affected rescue to get everyone to safety. So on behalf of the Borough of Madison, Robert, I present you with the Mayor's Award for your heroic effort and your effort to save the Bumgartner family. And if I could have Troy, James, and James come up here, along with Shannon. Many of you probably have driven down Park Avenue over the last week or so and saw the burnt-out shell of a building multifamily home. It was an incredible fire a week ago Saturday. If you saw the flames, the picture of the flames at the peak of that fire, you would have, you know, just been worried about the lives that would have been, could have been lost, the firemen that could have been hurt and fighting the fire. And what we have is a true great story in that no one was hurt, through a great rescue, people not even thinking twice. Through a series of phone calls, James Caveza made sure, found out that there was a woman on the second floor not being able to get out, made sure that rescue help was on the way. And for your help and your effort to make sure a life was saved, Mayor's Award for the Borough of Madison on behalf of the Borough of Madison. Our next two heroes are a little extra special to me because I've known them since they were very young. I think I first met James helping serve breakfast at Joe's, aka Central Lunch, and Troy I had in sports classes at the Y. And there I taught sportsmanship, but I don't think ever thought I, I know I didn't teach you about going in to risk your life to save someone else's life. James, one of my stories, the first time I really got to know him, was I think I was at work, and he's walking down Britton Street, and my pregnant wife was stuck in a snowbank, and without even thinking, he stopped and dug her out and got her in there. But again, that was nothing compared to what you did a week ago Saturday. The building was already engulfed in flames. Not knowing how fast that fire spread, you knew you had a job to do, a job that you took an oath to deliver, but a job many people, myself included, probably wouldn't do or couldn't even think about doing. Without thinking twice, you went in there and saved someone's life. So on behalf of the Borough of Madison, we have Mayor's Awards for both of you, and thank you so much for what you have done. Have to apologize because in such, being such a first name basis, I named full names, Troy Bohoak, James Blair, James Caveza. So thank you so much for all your work. Reports from committees, public safety? Yep, I'm sorry, we'll hold up a second. Thank you so much coming in to support your fellow officers, firefighters. We'll try to get the noise away from the door. If we can start with reports from committees, public safety, Ms. Sukamoto?
Yep, thank you, Mayor. First, I want to say to Liz of the Alternative Press that we're very sorry about the passing of your husband, and please accept our sincere condolences, Liz. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mr. Hoover and Mr. Pico for their willingness to serve the town, and congratulate Ms. Bailey and Mr. Wolkowitz. I look forward to working with them both. The Complete Streets Committee continues to work on safety improvements around town, including the junior school, Ridgedale Avenue, Park Avenue, Greenwood-Rosedale intersection, Central-Fairview intersection, Britton and Greenwood, and Main and Greenwood intersections. And for this holiday season, the police department will be very proactive in DWI patrol funded by a public safety grant. Please remember not to drink and drive. The Fire Department would like to remind everyone that a dry tree is a dangerous fire hazard. Please remember to water live Christmas trees daily. As to fireplace safety, if you use a wood-burning fireplace or stove, please make sure to have your chimney annually cleaned and inspected by a professional. Also, only burn seasoned hardwoods in your fireplace, and please dispose of ashes in a metal container and place it outside of your home. For the month of October, the Madison Police Department responded to 2,279 calls for service. The officers responded to and investigated 42 motor vehicle crashes, issued 133 summonses, and made 14 arrests, including three narcotics arrests, three warrant arrests, three driving while intoxicated arrests, two disorderly arrests, and three underage possession of alcohol arrests. Thank you.
Thank you. Utilities, Dr. Esposito?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. First thing I'd like to do is congratulate our council members-elect, Ms. Bailey and Mr. Wolkowitz. We look forward for a good three years ahead. Second of all, our utilities workers continue to go out and fix and maintain our systems. There's still a lot, a lot of work ahead, especially with the primaries and a lot of secondaries, so they'll be out there, as they have been since the storm, to get our maintenance and our power to where it should be. So I commend them for taking numerous hours to take care of this, and even away from their families to get our system back up and running at full capacity. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Public Works Engineering, Finance, and Borough Clerk, Mr. Catalonello?
Thank you, Mayor. The Safe Roads to School Project, known as the Sampson Avenue Improvement, will have a bid opening tomorrow morning. The Borough of Madison expects to award the project to a general contractor within 60 days. Construction target is early spring 2013. The Rosedale Avenue Improvements Plan and specifications completed by staff have been approved and authorized for bidding by the New Jersey Department of Transportation, who have funded part of the project. Appropriations for the project must be completed prior to bid. PSENG has completed work on the Main Street gas main. New building gas services are in progress. A follow-up meeting with public service will occur to go over the project completion items and a closeout schedule. Quite a lot of work's been done on the pump stations. CME Associates is completing the plans for specifications for the Treadwell Pump Station and expects to have design work finished by the end of the year. The project relocates controls above ground to a prefabricated enclosure and adds an emergency generator with a separate enclosure. An emergency generator has been requisitioned for the Candlewood Drive sanitary sewer pump station, and the manufacturer intends to deliver on-site in approximately four weeks. Staff has initiated plans for the Candlewood Station based on a recent land survey by Peter Borbus. The aluminum deck in the west-end pump station has been installed on new aluminum angle iron supports, and a painting contractor has been retained to complete repainting of the dry well. Matina and Sun General Contractors intend to install two replacement air release valves on a Burnett Road 10-inch sanitary force main in conjunction with the internal cleaning work over the next few weeks. This additional work will allow the force main to be operated with a higher level of confidence. Plans for the 10-inch force main were delivered from Camp Dresser McKee today. The Madison Recreation Complex and the Field House site is ready for final paving. A surveyed stakeout of proposed fence lines has also been completed for compliance with NJDEP requirements pursuant to recommendations by PK Environmental Consultants. Proposals for site remediation and cost-benefit analysis are being reviewed. Based on events of Tropical Storm Sandy, several quotes have been received regarding additional fuel storage capacity at the DPW compound. Design work will need to be accomplished in order for the bid of the additional storage tanks to be completed by early 2013. Please refer to the municipal website for general announcements about current construction projects, and the engineering website for additional details about projects you may be interested in. Now, I have some information regarding the mandatory municipal revaluation that is ongoing. The initial inspection phase is complete. If you have not yet had an interior inspection, you may call our office to schedule an appointment. Phone number is 973-361-2701, and the hours of operation are between 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 p.m., and you can schedule an appointment then. Interior inspectors should only take five to 10 minutes of your time, depending upon the size and detail of your home. Inspectors are wearing a photo ID and will also carry a letter of introduction. Please do not allow anyone to enter your home without proper identification. The municipal assessor and police departments have the name, auto information, and photograph of each of the inspectors. Please call either The Police or Certified Valuations, Inc. at 973-361-2701 to confirm if you have any concerns at all. Inspectors are collecting data at your property and are not conducting an onsite appraisal. You may also see inspectors now as part of the quality control, conducting inspections as a result of any property changes or as a follow-up resulting from informal taxpayer meetings. Photography of all properties has been completed for the exterior of all properties. Our photographers may continue to be in the field as part of our QC program. Photographs of relevant sales information is available for review on the second floor of the Public Safety Building during informal hearing hours. Please call Certified Valuations, Inc. to confirm that they will be available for review prior to appearing. The revaluation is scheduled to be completed for use in the 2013 tax year. Please keep in mind that the tax rate will change as a result of the new assessed value of your property. Value letters are currently in the process of being mailed to property owners. These notices will indicate the value that we intend to report to the Morris County Tax Board for use in the 2013 tax book. Your preliminary evaluation letter will also include information to assist you in arranging for an individual meeting to review your property record card with a member of staff. These optional meetings are held locally with daytime, evening, and Saturday appointments available. Final value letters will be mailed to all property owners who have attended an informal taxpayer meeting or sent correspondence requesting a review of their proposed assessed value. If you consider that the new value does not accurately reflect the fair market value of your property, you may contact the assessor's office or the Morris County Tax Board to obtain information on the appeal process. If you choose to file a county tax appeal this year, you will have until May 1st, 2013, to file at the Morris County Board of Taxation. Petitions for appeal must be received to the Morris County Tax Board by May 1st. Please see the petition for more complete details and instructions and read carefully. If you have any questions at all regarding the process, please contact Certified Valuations, and once again, their phone number is 973-361-2701. Thank you, Mayor.
Community Affairs, Mr. Landrigan?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a few things. From the Madison Historical Society, but before I get into it, I just want to welcome Ben and Astrid. Congratulations, and I truly look forward to working with you over the next couple of years. Good stuff. The Madison Historical Society, they're sponsoring the 2012 resale at the Hartley Dodge Building. It's going to be on December 1st from 1 to 4 p.m. Music and refreshments will be available, and you could also come in and look at all the pictures in the building. It's a special day, so please come out and take a look. From the DDC, and I'll read this right from the paper. Home for the Holidays in Madison, an all-day event. It's an open house and basket raffle. It's on Thursday, December 6th. Meet local merchants and shop with friends, free gift basket raffle. And here's the rules. Visit each participating store and collect a raffle ticket. The more businesses you get to know, the more chances you'll have to win. Earn additional chances by making a purchase and shop locally. Drawing will be held at Cochia Realty at 6:30 p.m. that day. Okay. The second thing is Madison Holiday Gift Certificates are available, are on sale at Kramer's Carpet. You can buy a $50 gift certificate for $45, and as they say, the whole town is on sale. The certificates are good at any business in town, that's any business. And for every $25 in Madison gift certificates that you purchase, the DDC will donate. And for every $25 in Madison gift certificates that you purchase, the DDC will donate $1 to hurricane relief. So it's good for the hurricane relief, and it also helps support your local merchants. That's important. A lot of them are hurting right now because they were closed for a while after that hurricane. Okay, there's also a resolution on this evening's consent agenda to change the one-hour parking to two-hour parking in the downtown during the holidays. It has been done for two years in a row, and it's been very well received from the merchants. Now, I'm going to ask everybody on council to support this program. Okay. Poor Herbies will host a 10% give-back fundraiser to benefit the Friends of the Madison Shade Trees on Tuesday, November 27th. That's tomorrow from 6 to 10 p.m. Music will be supplied by Mike Sedano. I've gone to these fundraisers before. It's a nice way to have a night out. You get something to eat, and some of the money goes to a very worthy cause. So if you're planning a night out, go there tomorrow, and you could help some people. Finally, at the last council meeting, I said that I would be available to help any resident in town who's filing with FEMA. To do that, the best way to get in touch with me, Elizabeth Osborne, has offered her phone. So if anybody asks a question with FEMA, if you're filing for your home, call Liz at (973) 593-3041. She'll get the message to me, and I'll get in touch with you. Effectively, what FEMA is doing is if your home was damaged and your part or all of it was not covered by insurance, you can apply for FEMA funding to get some aid. So if you feel you're in that category, call Liz. She'll get the message to me, and I'll get back to you. Okay, that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Health and Public Assistance, Ms. Vitale.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to also add my welcome to Ben and to Astri. It was a good night for you to start with all of this wonderful stuff happening, all these wonderful people in Madison. This is from Lisa Gola, who is our new health officer. The health department staff was honored to participate in the parade on Friday night. They felt that it was an amazing evening, and they'd just like to do it again. I hope not for the same reasons, you know. But anyway. And also, now from Health Education, Christine Chessler. There is an event. It's all on the website, on the Municipal Alliance website for details, but it's called Misrepresentation, and it's November 28. So you can go on the website and take a look at when that is being held. The Rabies Clinic will be held December 1st from 9 a.m. to 10 a.m. at the Chatham Township Public Works Building. And if you need any other additional information about it, you could also see that on the website of the Health Department. On December 1st, from 8 a.m. through 10 a.m., there will be CMP blood testing to be done at the Civic Center. The fee is $25, and this clinic provides 23 different blood tests and screens for multiple issues, included but not limited to cholesterol, diabetes, kidney function, liver functions. So, you know, please call for an appointment at (973) 593-3079. There will also be a men's cancer screening to be held on Monday on December 3 at 6 p.m., and this clinic is offered free of charge. So also, if you need more information about that or you need an appointment, you can call the Health Department. There's also a women's cancer screening that will be held on Wednesday, December 12 at 9 a.m. The exam is free. If a Pap test is needed, there's a $25 fee. So again, please make your appointment and/or call the Health Department for more information. These are wonderful things that are being offered, and I can't recommend highly enough, you know, the men's cancer screening and the women's cancer screening. This is a wonderful service that we offer our residents, so please take advantage of it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And I did neglect to welcome Astri and Ben. So the public is aware, they will be sworn in on January 1, New Year's Day, but so they can start hit the ground running, they will be sitting in on all council business between now and then. So welcome aboard. Communications and petitions.
Yes, Mayor. Council received seven emails since our last meeting. Email received November 6 from Ted Dorv Beach Avenue regarding restoration of power to Beach Avenue. Another email on November 6 from Bill Canard of Green Avenue thanking the mayor and borough staff for all their efforts during the storm. An email on November 7 from Caroline Wilson of Rose Avenue regarding tree damage during the hurricane. Another email on November 9 from Brian Chase of Buckingham Drive requesting assistance from the mayor and council with building permits. There was an email on November 17 from Antonette La Cord of Riggs Place regarding membership at the YMCA. An email on November 21 from Andreas Billards of Main Street regarding construction noise on Main Street. And another email on November 21 from Gina Esposito of Morristown thanking the mayor and council for the Christmas parade. That's what we received.
So this is now time for the invitation of discussion, one of two. And the rules on this, when you step up, please state your name, your address. Keep your remarks to three minutes or less, and this is limited to items on the agenda discussions and resolutions. And on the agenda discussions, we have capital improvement for Rosedale, the approval of capital funding for two HVAC units, HVAC units at the library, community development block grant application, appropriating money for public works utility vehicle. We are adding two new items for discussion. One is adopting the town of Union Beach as our sister city in the Sandy recovery, and also a discussion on debris, storm debris removal. And there will be two new resolutions besides the ones that are already listed on the board. One is appropriating open space funding for fencing at the MRC related to, also drawing a blank in my mind here, just, thank you, site remediation. And then also a resolution approving going out to get proposals for a base for a shed at the community gardens. With those rules, anyone wishing to comment, please step forward. Is there anyone wishing to comment? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting and move on to agenda discussions. First one, $480,000 for general capital improvement roadway improvements on Rosedale Avenue. And Bob Vogel, you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members. In the packets was an agenda recommendation covering the Rosedale Avenue improvements, which are basically a mill and overlay project for Rosedale Avenue, plus sidewalk ramp improvements, plus traffic calming improvements, which are striping and signage associated with pedestrian improvements and making it much more of a complete street than what exists today. One of the reasons that the amount of the project is as high as it is is it's a full mile of road, and the asphalt prices haven't gone down much in terms of a spring bid. So, you know, the $480,000 fits into the original cost estimate that was submitted to the state for funding, and the state has come back with $140,000 match. So, I mean, if the construction costs itself come in at 440 and the state matches 140, the local share probably will be on the order of $300,000. So basically, we're looking at the appropriations this evening, and I suppose that one of the things that has to be mentioned as far as Rosedale Avenue appropriations at this stage is we have three major road projects that have to be accomplished in the 2012-2013 timeframe. One of them is Sampson Avenue, which we had appropriated earlier towards the end of this year and was federally funded. The second is Rosedale Avenue, which is state-funded and remains to have appropriations done on it. And the third, obviously, is Green Avenue, where we have applied for state funding and we have not done the appropriations yet. The important point to convey here is that Rosedale Avenue is not really being done in a sequence. It's a logical time to do that appropriation. We are in position for the plans and specifications being done and being approved by the State of New Jersey to bid and award a project in the earliest part of spring. And I think that fits within our scheme for the three big road improver projects that have to be done in the 2012-2013 timeframe. And so I wanted to throw that out there as an additional fact and open it up for questions.
Any questions or comments? Janie.
Bob, looking at the resolution from 2011, I just noticed that at that time, we estimated the cost to be $430,000.
Correct.
And we were asking $200,000 from the state for funding, and they came back with 140.
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
How, can you explain to us how they determined the 140 from the lower from the 200 that we asked for? Perhaps this can help us in applying for additional grants in the future if we know what they're thinking.
I think the State of New Jersey, instead of zooming in on Madison as their object for funding certain projects, looks more as though they are funding 100, 150, or even 200 municipalities throughout the State of New Jersey, and they have a fixed pot that they have to deal with. And oftentimes, the municipal aid program at the State of New Jersey is intended to get more money as incentive out to more municipalities instead of funding fewer projects at a higher level. And so, I mean, that 140,000 was on the low end of all the projects that were awarded in, for the 2012 timeframe. I haven't actually gotten a written rundown of how we ranked or how the numbers had worked out, but I know that they did have a fixed pot of money to deal with. And I suspect our project, for some reason or another, probably the fact that it's a mill and overlay project in its essence, didn't rank really highly as far as the state was concerned. And I think a lot of it has to do with the average daily traffic flow on those roads as well, and Rosedale isn't one of the higher average daily traffic flows in terms of all the projects for municipal aid that the state sees. And so my guess is it's a combination of those two items, instead of being something really specific about Madison or the project that we have proposed, because it is a great project.
If we can learn from this experience and be smarter next time when we fill out that grant application, maybe we'll get more money in the future.
Keep trying.
Right.
Bob, I just wanted to make sure. Now, we're just doing the surface on Rosedale, so the water, sewer, everything else has been done?
That's correct.
Previous, okay.
Yeah, I mean, we've looked at the drainage on the road, and with the mill and overlay project, the state also requires us to put new backplates on it for non- wind source pollution, which is more finer grades. However, you know, overall, the drainage conditions on Rosedale during a storm aren't adverse. There's very little ponding that occurs within 18 hours after rainfall. And so I don't think additional drainage improvements are really needed. I have seen a couple of spots, Carmella, where water has perked up through the bottom of the road. So I know there's some subbase repair that has to be done, but in terms of adding drainage basins, I don't believe so.
Any questions or comments?
Yeah.
And Janie.
Regarding the, perhaps I should ask this when we get to the ordinance. I'll hold it when we get to the ordinance.
I think it's all right to.
It's okay?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll mention it here. This was approved 2012 capital project, correct?
No.
Oh, it was not?
No, it was on our five airplane.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
We got the state funding in the April-May timeframe of 2012. The state actually approved the plans and specs in October of 2012, and so now's the time to pull the trigger on the appropriations and go to the next step.
Okay. Also, my second question is that, a question for Matt. Since this project is going to, the cost of the project is going to be offset by the municipal aid grant of the 140,000, should we include that as one of the warehouse in the ordinance itself? Because I think we typically do that in the past.
I don't think it's a problem to include it. You're going to offset it with 140, so you can actually include it in the warehouse policy. That would not be a material change.
Right, and plus, we still appropriate the full 480.
Absolutely, that's right.
So it's reimbursed by the 140 from the grant that you received.
We have a full ready agreement with the state for the 140.
So you can just take that as a warehouse.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, and it's just been introduced tonight, so we will add that. Okay. So that is, again, listed for introduction. Item two, appropriate $46,000 from General Capital Improvement Fund for two HVAC units for the Madison Public Library. I see Tom and Nancy both here. Nancy, you go.
These are two HVAC units that were put into the new additions that opened in 1993. They are electric only. Two years ago, Arcari Ayavino Architectural Firm did a building report on the library, and they indicated that these units are past their usefulness and that they are electric only and that they should be gassed, such as our other units are. This request was approved to be included in the 2012 capital budget. We are starting to experience greater maintenance issues. A year ago, we had to put a new compressor in the one unit, and frankly, the second unit has never been, I don't think, appropriately working for the local history area. So we are requesting the release of the $46,000.
Questions, discussion? Again, it's in the capital budget. All right, and this is listed for introduction. Thank you very much. Next item is community development block grant application by the Housing Authority for generator. I don't see Lou. Ray, can you?
I can talk. Yeah, sure. The county sponsors the program with federal dollars, and the Housing Authority wants to make a request for approximately $100,000 for, the primary project would be for expanding the generation capacity of the generator at the Rexford Tucker Apartments. So in an emergency like we recently had, they does not service the entire building. This wouldn't allow the entire building, including the community room, which has cooking facilities and a meeting space for the entire building occupants to congregate, and would make it easier for us to service that community in place, rather than having to bring meals to them and relocate them during the emergency. If there's supplemental funding, then he wanted to extend that same process with additional natural gas generators as other sites throughout the town. So the program requires a resolution from the governing body to authorize the submission of the grant, that we're aware of it and that we're supportive of it, and that's the request, and it's 100% funded by federal tax dollars. No contribution other than in-kind contributions required by the Housing Authority.
And certainly during the emergency, that was one of our areas of concern of senior housing and what to do with them. Bob and then Janie.
Yeah. Ray, these are natural gas generators?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, to me, that's a gimme. You have to go for it.
Janie.
Yeah, if I may add, this not only will provide power for the community room, it will give the entire building hot water and heat. Those are really important for the residents living in there. Also, the entire cost is going to be approximately $125,000, and we're applying for a grant of the maximum 100, and the other ones will come out of the funding from the Housing Authority. So.
Carmella.
Yeah, I think that this is probably one of the best things that have come out of this terrible storm. It's an absolute necessity down there. Those poor souls have had terrible time in the last couple of years. I'm also excited to see that 44 Cook Avenue and 24 Central Avenue is also going to be, have a generator, and that's real important because we have some seniors living there that really need that electricity and that help. So good luck to Lou Rikio.
And he's got a very good track record with funding.
Yes, he does.
So again, Resolution 278 is on the consent agenda. Moving on to agenda item four, appropriate $70,000 in General Capital Improvement Fund for public works utility vehicle. David's here. Hello, David.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This appropriation here for $70,000 for replacing a truck that was totaled during the hurricane Sandy. And we do have an insurance claim that's going to get them back about $19,500 will be put back into it, and then whatever paperwork we do for FEMA too, we'll put the money back into there for this vehicle. This is one of the newest vehicles we got, and it is crucial for when we do plow snow and that. we do plow snow and that. Plow snow and that. So that's why I'm here to ask for the money to appropriate the truck, to buy the truck.
Okay, and the, Bob, you've got this on our FEMA list? All right. Very good. So this is listed for introduction. Stay right there, David, we'll do the debris removal while you're here. And this is a, a discussion, the concern, as opposed to la, last year, after the Halloween storm, we did substantial amount of storm debris removal, not limited to the burrow trees. It turned out to be mostly a lot of the residential trees. This storm, far different in that it wasn't a branch event, event with a snow clause and the branches come down, it was a wind event, and we had full trees coming down. And we now have a considerable amount of larger-sized logs and things at, at the curb. And the concern here is, what can we handle and what should we handle? Rob, you brought this up, do you want to add, add to that in your...
Yeah, I just, I think it's important to remind residents that we have curbside debris pickup. So if you bundle your sticks or put them in trash containers, and the diameter of the, of the, of the branches, or three inches or less, they'll be picked up under an existing contract. So we would ask that all residents try and do that as best they can. And it runs out on December 21st, if I'm not mistaken, correct, Jim? But as we drive around, we notice that in some cases, people seem to be, you know, have, have stacks of, of stone that, of, of branches that remind me of Revolutionary War breastworks. You know, they're five, six feet high. And, you know, the, the question is, we, I think we need to decide what we can pick up, what the rules currently are, and how we're going to proceed. You know, because some of these, they're not necessarily tree trunks, but some large limbs came down. So, you know, you're looking at eight, nine-inch diameter, just limbs that came down that people are moving to the front of their property, that weren't necessarily burrow trees, but were privately owned trees. And as I understand it, we are, it is not currently the, it's not the responsibility of the borough to, to remove this debris.
And David, if you'd just comment on manpower, right now, you are trying to get everyone back into the leaf collection. They're being, being hampered by the fact that branches and things are mixed in with the leaves. And just as far as manpower to collect this size debris, can, if you can comment on that?
Well, right now, we have already made two times around the whole borough. The first time around, we had four contractors working with our two crews to, on picking up the debris. We got the initial one done. Then we went around, we're going, we went around one more time in heavy-hit areas, where we went back, went so soon, the people weren't able to get the debris out. We are all done for two times around for the whole borough. We have removed a lot of homeowners' branches, trees, logs, stumps, that, we're not taking those stumps. I have a company that's coming in to take care of just burrow stumps. I have a list of 56 stumps right now that I have to check, to check, and there's about, of those 50, there's like 45 that we have to truck, have to truck down. I don't have a machine big enough to pick up these stumps. I got Chatham Maine coming in to start breaking them down. These are just burrow trees, these are not homeowners. And any big logs, we have a pile down the back. Right now, I have Rotundian Sun from Chatham, which is coming in to start, they started cutting it up, and they're going to start removing that pile. And I have been riding around, and like you said, Robert, I've been telling a lot of people, we have yard waste, please tie it up, barrel it, do anything you can to help us out. We're done. When I tell that to some people, they get a little out of control. And then they just try to calm down, and then they want to make phone calls, and they want to call the mayor, the council, and everybody. And I said, "We've already discussed this," and they said, and they, and then when I want to calm down, they say, "Okay, fine." They have other people come in. Like today, I just called a person on Prospect Street, who had a whole tree. Trump was, the diameter of the trunk was like 28 inches in diameter. That's what they were bringing out. And it was by a contractor, and they're bringing, contractors are coming in with, were coming in with backhoes and loaders to put the stuff at the curb. And our machines, and machines, and the machines from the contractors, we did clean up the whole town. And we, that's where we stand right now. We have, and the grinding is going through on the process as we speak. I got a pile, we have over 3,000 cubic yards right now of crush down there, and three-quarters of that is already grinded, for mulch for, and then for next year.
So, what we need to do is get communications out.
Yes.
Again, confirming the only collection at this point, leaf collection as normal, and we need cooperation for, from our residents, that they do not mix anything in with the leaves.
Yes.
That we can only vacuum, we're not going to collect it otherwise. Any other debris with limitations as listed in our curbside pickup, can be bundled or put in barrels, as long as it's not too, too big, and will be picked up. And anything else, they have to arrange with their own contractors.
Yes, because our loaders are handling it right now. We're up on the top section here, and that's where they, well, they put everything in there. Branches, sticks, and everything where I cannot back, because it'll, it'll jam the hoses up. So that's why we're using the two loaders we have right now. And I got three to four trucks with each loader to keep going.
Okay. Janie?
Yeah. If we were, if we were to consider helping out all the residents of cleaning up their properties, including their trees, would that cost be reimbursable by FEMA? No, okay.
Okay.
So, I kind of know the answer to...
Yep, there we...
Yep, what I was going to say next, yep. Thank you.
All right, so, I think we're, we're good.
Okay, and I think Jim put on the website and that there too, that we're only going around twice, and not to put anything in with the leaves, but they're mixing everything in.
Yep, so, so we'll get the...
We're battling.
We'll get the word out again, and...
Yes.
So, okay, very good. Thank you, David. And the last agenda discussion item is adopting Union Beach as our sister, sister city. Just a little quick background, Union, Union Beach, Monmouth County, squeezed between Canesburg and Keyport, population about 5,000, blue-collar town, right on the Raritan Bay. Prior to Hurricane Sandy, a unemployment rate of 20%, and that, they have now been devastated. I talked to their mayor last night, and with the idea that we might want to adopt him, and he was very appreciative of the thought. And I said, you know, "How can we help you? Food, clothing, what do you need?" He said, "It's not food, it's not clothing. Our residents don't even have homes. They are being put up in hotels by FEMA, and sometimes get displaced when there's a wedding, scheduled wedding at the hotel, and they have to move out." I talked to a friend who would, has a, knows a resident in Union Beach, and suggested, maybe, can we help you with a donation for your house, and said, "We don't have a school. We need a school before we can worry about our housing." So the idea would be to, this would not become a line item in our borough budget, but a, a way to support. We would reach out to them, find out how we can help them out, how we can partner with Interfaith Council and others that are looking for ways to help the devastation in Ocean and Monmouth County, and make a major impact by working one community in particular. I brought this idea up to the executive council this morning, and we had a call about an hour before the council meeting tonight from someone who said, "If you go forward with this, I will make, don't mention my name, but I will make a $10,000 donation to kick off the fun and the effort." Thoughts? Bob, and then Rob?
Yeah, I think this is something very worthwhile exploring. I do know that a lot of these towns need a lot of help. When you go around Madison right now, you, hardly looks like anything happened, barring a few trees that are uprooted. I do have a friend that lives in that area, and what the mayor is saying is absolutely right, they are devastated. I know that my two children are donating their musical instruments, because on their website, their school lost everything. We're very fortunate to have what we have here. I think that if we pick a town to help them, that'll go a long way, especially this time of year. Like I said to the mayor before, you know, I have no issue, I'll even help them with their FEMA application, you know? We're moving along here, you know, you do whatever you can to help them.
Rob, and Carmella?
Yeah, and I think it's important that, that the residents realize that it's, as you mentioned, it's not a line item. So this is going to be a public-private partnership, where private individuals pledge their help, either monetarily, or, you know, by actually physically going down there and helping with whatever restoration. And I think this is a very worthwhile activity, and a great example of what a public-private partnership can do. And I'm, I'm very supportive of it.
Thank you. Carmella, do you choose?
Yeah, I, I like Rob's thoughts about probably physically getting involved and actually going down. I think there's a lot of people in this town that would be willing to do that. The thought came to me as, as I was walking, and I see Nancy here tonight, if they've lost their school, they've lost their school library. So I think it would be a great way for us to think about collecting books for children and whatever. And so I'm in full support of it, and willing to go down and put the work in Glipson.
Yep, Janie?
Yep, I think it's a great idea. We certainly are all very supportive of our idea. I'm sure that our residents and businesses will be very supportive of the idea as well.
Thank you.
Full support.
Very good. So I, I will, the Interfaith Council's meeting tomorrow morning, and prior to this coming up, I've been invited to attend that meeting, so I will present the concept of adopting Union Beach to them. And we will, I will reach out, and the mayor Smith suggested that our, their administrator and our administrator talk, so we'll have Ray reach out, and so we will get in motion the steps we need to solidify this connection, and then start reaching out for volunteers and support. And it is great to see that someone already stepping forward with that $10,000 donation. Thank, thank you for your support on that. And as I mentioned, for the Madison residents, we are all in this together, and I think this is truly a way for us to show that. Ordinances for hearing.
Okay, the ordinance scheduled for hearing was introduced by title and passed on first reading in a regular meeting of the council held on November 5th, 2012. It was posted and filed according to law, and copies were made available to the general public requesting scene.
I call up ordinances for second reading and ask the clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance supplement, ordinance 37, 2012. Ordinance supplementing Chapter 34 of the Code of the Borough of Madison entitled Police Department Establishing Promotion Procedures for the Rank of Police Chief, Captain, Lieutenant, Sergeant, and Sergeant, and Establishing a Procedure for Acting Appointments and Hiring of Police Officers.
I open the hearing. Is there anyone wishing to comment or question, or ask questions on ordinance 37-2012? If so, please step up to lectern, state your name, your address, and keep your comments to three minutes or less. Seeing none, I close the hearing.
Mayor, I move ordinance 37-2012.
Our second motion.
Council discussion? Let's see, okay, roll call, vote.
I was going to comment.
Okay. Mr. Sukamoto?
I was going to comment.
Oh, you were going to comment. Yes, Janie?
Okay, I was just going to say that it's very important for us to have a consistent procedure to do this. And also note that with an ordinance, there is opportunity for us to fine-tune the ordinance in the future, and we're supportive of whatever that we have right now.
Thank you. Any other council comments? Oh, yeah, sorry. Roll call, vote now.
Mrs. Sukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
I declare ordinance 37-2012 adopted and finally passed, and ask the clerk to publish notice thereof in the newspaper and file the ordinance in accordance with the law. Now, invitation, invitation for discussions, part two. This is when the opportunity to comment on anything, not limited to things on the agenda. But once again, please keep your comments to three minutes or less, and state your name and address when you come up to the lectern.
Pat Rowe, 25 Pine Ave, Madison, New Jersey. I had three quick things tonight. First was a question about the 2013 operating and capital budgets. Does the council have any plans to start that anytime soon? And also, my request would be that when you do, I would like to see some sort of presentation on the electricity wholesale rate, changes that are coming up in the next couple of years, and how that could be utilized for our five-year capital plan?
Certainly will, with the electric, we will incorporate that in as we do any forward looks into budget planning. The budget process, we have not scheduled anything for the month of December. Last year, we have a one-third turnover in the council this year, and the, the budget is approved by the new council, so kind of holding back a little bit on that. But as far as the staff level, the work has already begun.
Okay, thank you. Second item is terminal pay for retiring employees. I took a hard look at what's happening with the current chief and lieutenant retiring, and I believe right now, we're going to be paying them over about a period of 16 months between the two of them collectively, and...
February 1st and August 1st.
Sorry?
February 1st and August 1st.
Okay, but collectively, it's about 16 months, I think, the two of them?
I, I don't know.
Okay.
Well, I use that as a number. You know, in round numbers, it's about $170,000 that we'll be paying out. However, because we put them on terminal pay, my understanding is we're also going to continue to make pension payments for them? We're going to continue to pay healthcare benefits for them? As of the first of the year, I assume we're also going to be giving them additional vacation time? Is there some...
The practice here in the borough is a united additional vacation.
Okay.
They've made their intention to retire, they've gone out on terminal pay, and that's been a more outstanding practice, which is now contractual requirement in the borough of Madison, because they are members of collective bargaining.
Even the chief of police?
Well, the chief, the chief that we had, who retired, had a contract that mirrored the collective bargaining of the PVA.
Okay, well, I assume then you're in the process of now negotiating contracts with the staff?
Well, it's, it's more difficult than that, I think, if I could answer. As you know, right now, there's 34 pieces of legislation pending and threatened, and one of the issues is the terminal leave pass. If you looked at the, saw legislation today, Jersey City, terminal leave pass, I think last year was $15 million. So, the, the terminal leave pass is an issue that's not just Madison-specific, it literally runs the gamut, where there are chiefs of police who get paid two or $300,000 when they leave the, the municipality. So there are various pieces of legislation that are presently pending, and really, there's something that's going to be done legislatively where they would cap it, sick leave payouts, the terminal leave, and what it is, it's a crew time, people crew time, they have a right.
I'm not actually questioning that, that portion of it. I didn't say that's an obligation that was made years ago. But the, the real question is, do we have to pay them out over time, or can we make a lump sum payment? Because it seems to me that we're paying a significant amount of extra money between pension costs and healthcare costs to keep these people on the books. I don't know what type of overtime we're paying to cover their salary, to cover their, their positions as well. I know we hired one police person in the last couple of months, but, you know, it's, it's a fairly expensive proposition to keep people on the books. Do we have to keep paying these additional items for them while they're still technically employees of the, of the borough?
Well, a lot of it is whatever crew time they have, they have earned during the course of their employment, it's due and handled them, so they can do it.
I'm not questioning that part. I'm sorry. Is it a choice to switch between a lump sum or putting them on terminal?
And I can't, I can't speak to that specifically. Usually, most places prefer to do it over time, because they don't have a budget allocation to pay out, you know, $40,000, $50,000, whatever the number is. That's one reason. The other reason is, when you have retirements like this, there's a thing called breakage. And what happens is, is that when you have a senior officer or officers who are leaving, you're, if you don't, you're not going to be replacing with a senior officer, what you do is you hire a new patrol officer. And the one benefit that was achieved with the, the recent arbitration award with the PVA was the arbitrator, the body of arbitration, established a new salary guide for new hires, with a, a lower starting salary and additional steps. So the breakage is going to be far more significant for the borough as they hire new officers who replace people who retire. So some of the monies that, that you're spending over time with terminal leave, you're offsetting it with new officers at a much lower salary.
But that's going to happen regardless. I mean, they're going to come onboard. I'm for the break.
We're up on it, but there are some advantages, disadvantages either way, and sometimes as far as, when a officer decides his retirement time, it may be significant as far as his future plans, and it may be beneficial to both parties, as in any, any, any process.
I just, I'm going to take a harder look at this.
Yep.
I can't see a benefit to the taxpayer to keep the people on the payroll over that period of time. I just think we're paying a lot of money. It's not even going in their pockets, we're paying it to the state, to the insurance companies to cover them. And, you know, so they're not getting the money, we're paying the money, and we have and we have the money in the bank to pay that type of sum out, we're not paying out millions and millions of dollars.
Okay, yep.
So I just think you should take a harder look at that before we do that in the future.
Thank you.
You absolutely will.
Okay, and then the last item is the revaluation process, have we completed all the residents in the town yet and all the commercial properties?
Yes.
Do we know what the net change is going to be in the valuation of the entire borough?
No.
When will we know that?
I want to get your letter.
No, I have my letter already, I'm trying to figure out if the 63% of my property is going up is above or below average, because I will tell you this one, I had a couple of people in my block who got their letter and showed on it because they didn't realize, I mean, they didn't read the fine print that says, don't apply this to tax rate.
Yep.
And I've said this to a couple of people, the best course of action for the borough would have been to put out a letter that said, here's your old value, here's your new value, here's the old tax rate, and here's the new sort of calculated tax rate we can use in the evaluation system. So you can see roughly what your, the impact is going to be to you, how much more or less, because for the majority of people in this town, it should be very little change over time.
We anticipate very little change.
Unless there's a major shift between commercial and residential, are we seeing that happening?
We are not seeing that happening, because the commercial sector, especially the big users have actually, over the last 10 years, been very aggressive on tax appeals, so they've revalued de facto for the last 10 years. We think they're at market and they're going to revalue at market, so it should be a new shift in commercial to residential.
Okay, then actually, more than.
Ooh, well past your three minutes.
I'm filibustered by the attorney there. My time was actually probably about a minute and a half. Is it possible for the borough to post the entire package that you provide to the newspapers online rather than just sort of the short agenda? It'd be nice if you actually read the entire ordinances and resolutions that you're going to be voting on in advance instead of having to show up here and steal the independent press copy in the evening of the meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Please step forward, state your name. Okay, Sam? Let the rec reflect that we're losing pens, sorry.
No, just a few things, Mayor. It's really good to see that things are happening on Kings Road, that New Jersey Transit fixing that, and I've been watching it and never really know what they're doing, it's going to be a beautiful job. I'm just hoping that they're going to do that bridge on Elm Street after that, or?
Yeah, if you've seen the, the signs are up but covered right now is anticipation, and for those that, I'll stop the clock for a second here, Sam. For those that may not be aware, you know, I'm the mayor, you know, I've got the clock, the lawyer doesn't. The Elm Street Bridge, if you've gone under it, is in bad shape. It will be, as part of this project, not only will be repaired, but there will be a neighborhood impact in that Elm Street will be closed off as far as being able to get from Park Avenue up to Madison Avenue, so it will be kind of dead-ended at the bridge for several months, so please keep that in your mind as, for your travel plans.
Thank you. The second thing is, the lights have been out, and hopefully they, I'm talking about the lights at the 49 acres there. I mean, especially now with fall and all that stuff, you don't have the trees blocking, but people on North Street and Burner Row are, you know, saying, why do the lights got to be on every night, and they're not, nobody's playing on it. Are they on timers, or, like the last three, four days, the lights have been out, how does that work? And I mean, if there's nobody down there, why do we have to waste the electricity? I don't know how much it costs a month to keep them lights on, but I think they were on timers, because I've been down numerous times where there's nobody down there and the lights are on. Can anybody explain?
They're on timers, but also with ability to shut them off remotely, and I know we were working on a process to try to, you know, not just save energy, but save light pollution by keeping it under control, so I guess we can pass that back so we can take a look and make sure we're not lighting the fields more than we need to. Thank you.
And also, while we're talking about the 49 acres, am I understanding that the parking lot is ready to be paved, finished, or is that what we were talking about before?
The, well, the parking lot needs its top coat along with the roadway, we, what we, the resolution for tonight is a fencing area.
Yeah, no, I'm not talking about that, my concern is that, are you going to do the parking lot, finish it off with blacktop?
Yeah, that'll come in the spring paving season.
Which was you going to do now, who called it?
No, yes.
I was right on a concern.
Nope, not now.
Oh, that's great, very good, thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Done?
Hi, Don from the 29th Drive, just wondering, I know New Jersey Transit, on the weekends now, there's no more free parking on Saturdays at the railroad station. Used to be, after 4:00, there used to be free on Saturdays and Sundays?
The way the, well, there's free parking at, on the weekends at the borough-owned lots. The Crescent is a lease agreement with New Jersey Transit, with the proceeds going to the Friends of Madison Train Station to support it, and in the support for that, setting up the fees for that, I believe we did a Monday through Saturday, if I recall, and so that's where the signage leads, so if you're willing to walk across the street, you got free parking in the borough-owned commuter lots, but if you're going to park in the Crescent on a Saturday, you need to pay for that.
You can still park Sunday in the Crescent?
I believe Sunday is free, but double check the signage, I think it, I think it is free.
Weekdays after 4:00? Weekdays after 4:00 in the Crescent?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Anyone else wishing to be heard? Seeing none, I close this part of the meeting, moving to introduction of ordinances.
Okay, ordinance is scheduled for first reading, have a hearing date set for December the 10th. All will be published in the Madison Eagle, posted on the bulletin board, and made available to members of the public requesting copies.
I call up ordinances for first reading, ask the borough clerk to read said ordinances by title.
Ordinance 38, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $480,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Road Improvements on Rosedale Avenue.
I move ordinance 38-2012.
Well, I second that, that's amended, right?
Right, with the whereas.
Yes.
$140,000 from state grant, and. Council discussion? Seeing none, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ordinance 39, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $46,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for two HVAC units for the Madison Public Library.
I move ordinance 39-2012.
Second up?
Discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Ordinance 40, 2012, ordinance of the Borough of Madison appropriating $70,000 from the General Capital Improvement Fund for Replacement of a Utility Vehicle.
I move ordinance 40-2012.
Second?
Council discussion? Roll call, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Consent agenda resolutions?
Consent agenda resolutions will be enacted with a single motion, any resolution requiring expenditure is supported by a certification of availability of funds. Any resolution requiring discussion will be removed from the consent agenda. All resolutions will be reflected in full in the minutes.
I move consent agenda resolutions are 269-2012 through 281-2012. I believe 280 and 281 need to be read.
Read it, so should we just do?
I have 280, which one was 281?
281 was the base for the shed.
Would I have to read 288's record?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Resolution 280-2012, resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing the use of up to $65,000 in municipal open space trust funds for fencing at the MRC site. Whereas the Borough Engineer has recommended that up to $65,000 be allocated from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for fencing at the MRC project site to facilitate the disbursement of $1.2 million in previously approved Greenacre Grant awards. Now therefore being resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison, County of Morris, and State of New Jersey, that up to $65,000 is hereby authorized to be spent from the Municipal Open Space Trust Fund for supplemental fencing and related work at the MRC project site to facilitate the disbursement of $1.2 million in previously approved Greenacre Grant awards.
Discussion? Just, I have a question on extended parking, we had talked about the possibility doing a short-term, I think we discussed it at DDC, I'm trying to remember what the outcome, whether we.
Do we actually do a resolution?
Yeah, on Main, the idea was on Main Street that you have businesses like Garden State News that rely on the come-in-and-go traffic, and the two-hour might be counterproductive for them as whether we'd want to do that, I'm not too sure how easily feasible that is. My one thought would be, let's, I guess, let's just go ahead with it and take a, so never mind, sorry.
Yep, question on 270, the one about extending two-hour parking as well. The resolution states that we're doing this retroactive to, I believe, the 22nd? Let me see, 270, to November 22nd. Just had a discussion while I was walking in the room with Acting Chief Datchison, there are certain, there might be certain tickets that had already been written, and some people might have already paid their parking tickets, so it will be much cleaner if we make the effective day tomorrow rather than going back to this 22nd of November. Is there any objection to that?
I would recommend that as well.
Yeah, I think it's probably a good idea, yep.
Okay, so we have to amend resolution 270 to make the effective day of November 27th?
7th, and we'll make a note that we'll do this in the first meeting in November and not the second meeting in November next year.
Yep, that's right.
Right, any other discussion?
Yeah, do we need to read into, to record 281 as well?
Yes, we do.
Yes, I read 280, but Twitter, people.
Oh.
And we pay him by the word, too.
He would prefer, he would prefer not.
Exactly, exactly. Resolution 281-2012, resolution of the Borough of Madison authorizing the erection of the garden shed at the MRC Community Garden Site, whereas the Madison Community Garden Advisory Committee has requested authorization to erect a garden shed at the MRC Garden Site, and whereas this matter has been considered at the regular public meeting of the Borough Council on November 26, 2012, now therefore being resolved by the Council of the Borough of Madison and the County of Morris and State of New Jersey, the garden committee is authorized to erect the garden shed, and the acting purchasing agent is authorized to solicit quotes for said work at the MRC Garden Site.
Okay, so now we have both resolutions called in, we do have the motion moved and seconded for the consent agenda through R281. Any further discussion? All right, roll call, vote, please.
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
Right, we have no unfinished business, approval of vouchers?
Public safety, $30,478.52. Health and public assistance, $2,812.15. Public works and engineering, $166,682.25. Community affairs, $3,831.80. Finance and borough clerk, $89,405.18. And utilities, $1,230,783.43. Total is $1,523,993.33.
Move the vouchers for approval?
Second. Discussion? Seeing none, roll call, vote?
Mrs. Tsukamoto?
Yes.
Dr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Catalonello?
Yes.
Mr. Landrigan?
Yes.
Mrs. Vitale?
Yes.
We have no new business?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you, we only have one more of those to do.
Hey, when is the next week's meeting?
Whoever you're trying to test me on this one?